Welcome to the February 28th Select Board Meeting. In keeping with an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, and as amended by Governor Baker on February 12th, 2022, this meeting will be conducted remotely over Zoom. Attendance by board members will be remote and attendance shall count towards the quorum. This meeting is broadcast live and recorded on Eastern Community Access Television, which is Comcast 98 and Verizon 23 and on ECAT's website at www.eastencat.org. This meeting is closed captioned for the hearing impaired. If you're watching on your computer, you'll see a computer CC button on the toolbar at the bottom of your screen. If you're watching at home and you have a question or a comment, you can email the board at selectboard@easton MA.us. If you're watching from an electronic device, please pose your question on the Q and A feature of the Zoom portal. And please remember to include your name and street address for our minutes. At this time, I'd like to ask each Select Board member to state their name to ensure we have a quorum.
Craig Barger.
Mark Lamb.
Jamie Stebbins.
Jennifer Stacy.
And Dottie Full Genetti. Thanks for being here, everyone. Connor, were we going to do the poll hearing first and just jump into that? Or should we start with Gary? I can't remember.
Well, I think we were considering the poll hearing because it's time for six, but I don't see anyone in the attendees yet from Verizon to my knowledge. So we can just open that hearing after if you'd like. We can start with the with the chief.
Perfect.
So, Michael, could we move the chief into the panel, please?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Chief.
I'm doing well. Thank you.
So, Dottie, if I may, this is in your packet and chief, forgive me and indulge me, please. I wanted to just read through most of a summary that I've wrote of my experience working with you, recognizing the service you've given this community for 27 years. And I figured it's budget night as well, so I might as well try to run up the scoreboard with how long I get to go on tonight. So the chief has informed me and I've informed the board now that after 27 years with Eastern Police, he'll be retiring July 8th this year. We are graciously accepting that retiring following many years of devoted and professional service to the department, the community and to his profession. The chief has made his career here in Easton and he worked his way up throughout that. He started in patrol in 1995 before serving as sergeant from 2005 to 2009 and lieutenant from 2009 to 2015. Finally, Gary's been serving as chief for seven years from 2015 through 22, which, you know, that's significantly more. These are incredibly difficult jobs during significantly calmer periods in public life. And the chief has put in a tremendous amount. I obviously can't summarize the whole of such a lengthy term of service, but I want to note the things that jumped to me. So to start, I think it should be acknowledged that few, if any, areas of municipal government have changed and have evolved as rapidly, dramatically and under as much scrutiny as policing has in recent history. Expectations for service accountability and responsiveness from the public and governmental leaders towards law enforcement and their leaders have grown over time in response to innumerable societal challenges, some of which were not even on the radar of law enforcement when Gary first entered this profession. These challenges range from the opioid epidemic to gun violence, school shootings, police use of force, officer accountability and agency transparency. Through all of these changes, Chief Sullivan at Eastern Police have remained in the forefront of professional standards and policing and best practices to meet the changing needs of the public. As lieutenant, Gary managed Easton's first voluntary accreditation from the Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission back in 2011. This is significant because this predates the very recently enacted state law for police reform in Massachusetts that established a statewide certification and accreditation system. This precedes that by more than a decade and was an entirely voluntary process. And I think it speaks a lot to the proactive and professional approach that Gary has always taken and that the police department under his leadership have carried forward for years. This is also important because it positions the department for continued success as state police reform is implemented. Prior to his tenure as chief, the department had not yet rolled out tasers as less than lethal equipment for officers. It was not yet commonplace for police to carry and administer Narcan to save lives on the frontline of the opioid epidemic. This year, the chief successfully sought and received grant funding to keep the department moving forward, to purchase bodyborne cameras for the police who are currently working together with our labor union partners to negotiate that implementation. Gary's always been a strong proponent of community policing and partnerships. He worked with the Eastern Wings of Hope to support families affected by substance use. He has assigned civil rights officers to the Human Rights Committee, who is now the deputy chief of police. He's participated in critical regional efforts above and beyond the requirements of his substantial title for the promotion of improved public safety, including Metrolec and incredibly significantly the Southeastern Massachusetts Regional Emergency Communication Center, SEMREC. In addition to managing during a time of great change in the profession, Gary's led the department through a generational change in staffing, through budget crises and tragedy. And just this year, he's hired seven student officers to replace forthcoming retirements and bring the new generation into the police department. Part of this is to meet a longstanding goal of his to grow the department's staffing to 38 and also to launch one of his long sought initiatives, which will be a community outreach unit that will work with a civilian social worker to provide non-acute, ongoing case management and follow-up services for vulnerable and marginalized members of our community. He prioritized gender diversity within departmental hiring practices and promoted Easton's first female sergeant. During his tenure, Easton also moved away from local dispatching to regional 911 dispatch. And he was instrumental in the delicate task of managing the dissolution of an entire department and union while transitioning a critical 24/7 emergency function to a regional body with zero room for downtime or error. He was key in negotiating the current staff model that we have today for station officers that allow for improved public safety service availability at the police station at a significant operational cost savings to the town. And finally, he's always promoted a strong leadership team and a team-based approach, coupled with regular training and professional development. He prioritized the restoration of a deputy chief position shortly after his own promotion to chief. I feel confident that I speak for all of us when I say that Gary appointed and mentored an incredible deputy, which positions the department of the community well for continued success. I know that looking at the chief and deputy Boone was, you know, one of the key thought processes for, I know myself and that this board supports, really edifying how critically important it is to establish and fund these key deputy positions for these large, critical departments throughout Easton. And we've taken that and applied it to many departments since then. So to wrap that up, I'm thankful, chief, for your service to the profession, the organization and to the community. I know so many in Easton are as well. I'm also personally grateful to you for your support, leadership and your loyalty during many years of some pretty incredible challenges and opportunities. So, thank you. And Gary, I'm going to kick it to you now before the board adds their perspective as well.
Well, again, good evening, everybody, and I'll be brief. I know you have a busy agenda ahead of you. So, you know, I, some of you I've worked with for my entire tenure, like, you know, Dottie, you know, we've had several meetings, you know, while you were with the Select Board and as well with Eastern Wings of Hope. So we've met frequently when we're trying to kick off our partnership. So I want to thank you for your friendship and your professionalism as well. So some of you I haven't worked with as often or as long, I should say. You know, Mark and Craig, I think we're somewhere maybe in the middle. I've kind of lost, time goes by so quick. It's actually hard to imagine it's been 27 years since I was hired. So, but I appreciate your professionalism as well. Jennifer, I know you're new on the Select Board and we haven't had an opportunity to really work together at all, but I wish you much success. You certainly have a great team that you're working with. And Jamie, I know you're a newer member to the Select Board as well, but we've certainly spent some time together while you were with Finance Committee. And I really appreciate and value your friendship as well. Everybody's been very supportive of the police department and me, and I just want to thank you all very much. Connor, to you, we certainly have, I think we've worked together now for about six years in our respective positions. And I really appreciate your friendship. You know, we've been through some ups and downs together, some challenges, and I think we both have risen to the occasion. And I really thank you for your kind words. I very much appreciate it. So I do, you know, I do want to say that there's so many people that I want to say thank you to. And I know I'm not leaving yet, but and I hope to thank everyone in person. But, you know, I do want to recognize Chief Kevin Partridge, who's retired, Chief Justin Alexander, DPW Director David Field, Kristin Kennedy, the Director of Health and Community Services. There's so many good people that that work in this town. And, you know, it's, it's really, it's been quite a town to work in. I grew up here. I attended schools here and I'm just grateful to have had the opportunity to serve as a police chief. So, thank you all very much. And I'd also like to, I'm not sure if, you know, I have some family members that might be in attendance. So I do want to thank them as well. My daughter Kaylee, my son Corey. Unfortunately, my wife is holding down the Ford of Boston Medical Center. She's a nurse, so she wasn't able to attend. And also my parents, for everyone for their unwavering support of me and my pursuit. So, thank you all.
Thanks, Gary. We're going to just go around in our usual order and each Select Board member will make a couple of comments, starting with you, Craig.
Thank you. Chief, I just, I have three things that stand out for me. One is how welcoming you were when I was running for my first term as on the Board of Selectmen at that time, now called Select Board. When you welcomed me to your office and spent a good hour with me talking about the police department and the town of Easton and answering any of my questions. And I've always appreciated the fact that that was a good way to be introduced to the police department here in Easton. Number two, I was very impressed when you took the podium at the town meeting at Stonehill and handled some very difficult questions posed by members of the community around defunding the police and how well you handled them, how respectful you were to those folks and how I think you swung the vote in the favor of the department as a result of the way you handled that. And thirdly, you were a leader in the police departments across Massachusetts and probably across the country in responding to the George Floyd situation. And how you handled that was very impressive. And I've enjoyed my brief time working with you. And I, I hope you enjoy your retirement. And I'm sure that you have plenty of other things to do when you leave us in June. So, thank you very much, chief. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Craig.
Thank you, chief. Thank you for being here. Thank you for 27 years of service. That's absolutely remarkable. I know that, you know, as 27 years in any job is hard. 27 years as a police officer is rare. It's, you know, the higher up you go in ranks, the harder the job gets, the more difficult it becomes. And, you know, the times change, have changed considerably, and it's made your job even more difficult. And, you know, it's not just the job that's difficult. I've been on the other side at the end of your day when you go home and you go home to your family and that's when everything hits you. I've seen that side of things and I appreciate all that you did for 27 years. And I appreciate your family and their sacrifice to support you so you could do that for this town. Thank you very, very much. You did an outstanding job and the town owes you a debt of gratitude.
Thank you, Mark.
Chief Sullivan, I'm glad your family is in attendance tonight because, yeah, I was very fortunate to get the opportunity to meet you on my stint with the Finance Committee. And you were the first department I came to and the first guy I came to to learn and get all the dirt on everybody here on this, you know, camera right now. So, and I just want to say he would give up none. So you're a professional through and through. And I think Mark put it well, and I know Mark knows more firsthand coming from a family of law enforcement. But the sacrifice that your family makes, you know, for you to put on that uniform every day and assume the risk that comes along with that. And the responsibility is, to me, there is no greater. So your partnerships with the other departments phenomenal. I've never seen a town run so effectively between departments, DPW, Fire, Police and coming together during a pandemic to help vaccination clinics go on smoothly, to help this town navigate with Connor at the helm to make sure that we were the tip of the spear. Massachusetts, in terms of Massachusetts, this town, as we all know, was writing the playbook as you guys, you know, navigated through uncharted waters. So I couldn't be more proud of you and really to call you a friend is an honor for me. So, thank you to you and your family. I wish you all the very best.
Thank you, Jamie.
I'd just like to echo what everyone else has said and just add that, you know, when you are living through something day to day, you tend to forget just the gravity of the role someone plays in the community and what they do. And as Connor was reading through your 27 years of what you've brought to this community, it really is, it's mind blowing. And that's a huge, huge void that I am having trouble wrapping my head about how it will be filled. So, thank you so much because that gravity really struck me in that moment as Connor was reading through. You know, you've brought thoughtful, progressive and very professional leadership to the community, and that's reflected in the way the department runs and how they work with the community and treats the relationship with the community as a true partnership. And I think we're really blessed here in Easton to have that kind of dynamic here. You don't see that everywhere. And you don't see departments where there's just this shared mutual kind of feeling everywhere. And you don't have to go far to see that there are places that it's more, there are more challenges. We were very lucky here and there's so much that goes back to your leadership over the years. So, thank you so much for everything you've done. And the only consolation I have in this, you know, this bittersweet moment is knowing that you've left a really great department in amazing shape and that will be a huge asset for the community going forward. So, thank you so much, Chief Sullivan.
Thank you, Jennifer.
And to wrap it up, I just want to talk just a little bit about you personally. When we first started to work on Wings of Hope and, you know, we sat down with you. I remember you saying, you know, at the time, there wasn't even a protocol for how to use Narcan. And you said, you know, the job of first responders is to get to the scene and get everybody where they need to be and keep everybody safe. But there's no aftercare part of that. There is no, what do you do with, you know, people that, you know, are still there? And when we talked about what we wanted to do for an outreach person, again, we had to go through a year of working with the legal department in the town to be able to make sure we were doing it right. And you didn't give up. You were always supportive. You said to me that you weren't sure how to do some of these things, but you were willing to learn. We brought in the people from Pari. You were always open-minded to collaboration and to seeing what we could do next. And I thought that was very honest of you because, you know, things that you felt maybe uncomfortable at first, you were honest about that and we could work together. And I'm really, really proud of those programs that we put in place. And you've just been tremendously helpful to those families. I'd also say that when you talk about your officers and the people in the police department, you always were so respectful. I'd never heard you ever say anything bad about anybody. And you were really very, just, it just sounded like you were always lifting up people to do their best. And I really appreciate that kind of leadership. I got a little nervous when Craig was talking about town meeting because when I wrote down something I wanted to say that Connor forgot, you know, he missed in his first, first person to do this and that. I thought Craig was going to get to it, but you were the first police chief to get a standing ovation at town meeting. So, so we'll have to add that to the list of firsts. I know you don't like being on the spot. And so I even more appreciate you being here tonight, you know, to allow us the opportunity to share our experiences with you and to let your family know how much we care about you as well. And you, you know, the many times that you did talk about your family, your wife, your kids, your parents, you know, it really, you adore them. And I'm sure the work-life balance has been challenging at times. So I think it's wonderful that you'll be able to spend this time with them and congratulations.
Thank you very much, Dottie. I appreciate it. Thank you all for your kind words.
Chief, I'm going to make you stick around for like two more minutes. Just really quickly, Dottie, we also have in the packet and from the folks who are watching, and I see the press here as well, as we did with Chief Partridge, a process that Chief Sullivan was part of and I think went quite well. We felt it was important to lay out what the six-month roadmap looks like from here for succession planning, obviously with such a key executive leadership role. So it's in your packet. I'll just hit on some of the highlights. And the chief and I can answer any questions anyone has. So tonight is kind of the official, the chief acknowledging publicly, of course, that he will be retiring. I've appointed Gary to serve as an advisor to the future chief, effective July 11th for three months to help onboard and manage some continuing process with police reform and things like that. This is again similar. We added Kevin Partridge available as a consultant when we brought in a new chief and we feel pretty strongly it's a very good best practice to have for somebody to be available. We have already executed an agreement with an assessment center and done a necessary paperwork with the civil service because this is a civil service department to get what's called a delegation agreement to assign that assessment center. In March and April, we'll be soliciting lists of candidates of a department and do a preliminary screening. We will follow the civil service process from there. And in May, we'll have an assessment center conducted. The ranking will be done by mostly based on the assessment center outcome. This is similar to what we do with fire chief. They do role play. They do written oral exams of things like folks' knowledge of the law, but also how do they respond during hypothetical high-stress situations with a bunch of police and fire chiefs trying to give them a hard time and trip them up. Very, very good exercises to go through. And then we'll also look at education experience and rank. From there, in May, we'll review the results, conduct any additional screening that may be necessary. And then in June, it's my plan to appoint of an ex-police chief in the Select Board. From there, we'd execute a contract before July. And then from July through October will be the transition period. Chief Sullivan, Gary will be an advisor at that point and we will have a new chief. So if anyone has any questions about that, happy to answer them. Chief, if I tripped over one of the civil service processes, you can let me know.
Any comments or questions from the board? I just really appreciate the thoughtful transition plan. And, you know, it's so important. People say the government should run like a business. And in a business, you always have a transition plan established and ready to go. We don't want any kind of interruption in services. And you're right, Connor, it is a best practice. So we appreciate you both working on that so that this transition can be seamless. You can leave without any worries and the next chief can step in and feel very comfortable in that role. So, we thank you for being here tonight. It's been an honor to work with you. We still have a few more months left and I'm sure you'll be able to say goodbye in person to people as you go along the way.
Thank you all very much again. Very much appreciate it. You all stay well.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Okay, we will go back to our six o'clock hearing for the poll petition. Is if somebody's here from National Grid?
They're not. I'm fairly certain it's a necessary poll associated with the Red Mill Road project. However, so, and there's a map included. Of course, I'll defer to the board if you would like to wait and maybe if someone comes. But it seems like a relatively straightforward poll installation near property we own.
I think we should do it. If anyone feels strongly that we shouldn't, let me know now. But these are usually pretty straightforward. Craig, do you want to read the public hearing notice?
Sure. The Select Board of Easton is licensing authorities pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 166, Section 22, will hold a public hearing via remote participation using the Zoom platform on Monday, February 28th, 2021. It should be, I'm sorry, 2022 at 6:00 PM to consider an act on a petition of Massachusetts Electric Company and Verizon New England Incorporated to install one new J.O. pole on Red Mill Road, beginning at a point approximately 840 feet southwest of the center line of the intersection of Norton Avenue and Red Mill Road in accordance with a petition for Plan Number 30351845 dated October 13th, 2021, as shown on file with the Select Board's office.
So attached in your packet, you'll find the traditional memo and paperwork from Utility Company, in this case Verizon, as well as if you click on the document entitled Poll Petition, you will see a few pages down, a map illustrating where this is. It's for a new pole with underground wire and a manhole. This is located on Red Mill Road near the town property in 12 Red Mill, heading towards the future plan. DPW has reviewed it. They have no objection to this as submitted.
Any questions from any board members? Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion to accept the petition Plan Number 30351845 at Red Mill Road?
No move, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Roger and Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
It's a yes.
And Full Genetti, yes. All right. Next, we have a one-day liquor license. The applicant Jason Paganelli of True North Running Company. I think I saw him in the, in the attendees list. He's applied for a one-day beer and wine license for the Narragansett Summer Running Festival Road Race to be held on July 17th at Stonehill College from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Although a police detail is not required, Chief Sullivan recommended that the organizer contact Stonehill College Campus Police to determine how many detail officers will be needed for the event. So, Jason, glad to have you here tonight.
There we go. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate being here. And if I could just echo, I don't know if he's on anymore, but the chief. But we do business now in a lot of towns and put on a lot of road races. And very rarely do we get the cooperation from the police department as we do in Easton. It's just having been an Eastern resident for years before I left and moved to Rhode Island, whenever I return to Easton, I always feel like I'm still a resident. So, thank you to the chief and the town for that.
Thank you. So, tell us a little bit about the race.
So, this will be, believe it or not, our 10th anniversary of the event. So, we're back to a one-day event, which is why you're only seeing one liquor license request this year. We did the same thing last year to try to minimize our impact on the town and to make the event a little bit more efficient. So, it's a two-race event. There's a 10K component and a half marathon component. And obviously, our liquor license request is for the post-race after-party, which is in partnership with Narragansett Beer. And I'll remind the committee that we have very stringent rules that have worked well in the past few years for this process. So, number one, we limit each participant to two beers at the end of the race, handed to them by our race staff in a beer garden that is monitored by, in cooperation with the Stonehill College Police Department. So, it is a closed-off area of the college where we could monitor people coming and going. Only participants, runners who are 21 years of age or older, obviously are given beer tickets on their actual bib when they check into the race. And therefore, those participants have two beer tickets that they could sort of turn in at the finish line to collect on their Narragansets.
That's great. Any questions from anyone on the board? Jen, are you going to be running in this?
Not sure. I had a rule for myself this year. I wasn't signing up for any races. But as he was talking, I did this one last year. And I was like, oh, man, I might have to break my no racing rule this year for this one because it's a really good event. And I was like, oh man, I might have to break my, my no racing rule this year for this one because it's a really good event and it's really well-run.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, it's, it's really fun and it's awesome that it's right in my backyard, pretty much.
Well, this year for the 10th anniversary, we're buying everybody lunch. There's a hot dog barbecue at the finish line and veggie dog barbecue.
You're making it harder to follow my no racing rule for this year.
Well, whatever you decide, we hope you're there.
It's a good one, so I might have to make an exception.
Well, if there's no other questions, if somebody would like to make a motion to award this one-day liquor license to Narragansett Summer Running Festival. The True North Running Company LLC for July 17th, 2022, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Back to you.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
AC, yes.
And full genetti, yes. And good luck on the, on the day. I hope you have a wonderful event and thank you for continuing to bring the event back to Easton.
Thank you very much, guys. Have a wonderful evening.
Good night, Jason.
Okay, next we have the Easton Shovel Town Cultural District Management Partnership Team appointments. So where am I? So the charge of the Cultural District Management Partnership Team is to endorse the submission of an application and foster the development of a cultural district. Endorse the state-sponsored cultural district goals. Appoint a town official to represent the town within the district partnership. Encourage all who own property or businesses within the cultural district to involve themselves and participate in the full development of the district. Encourage town agencies to identify programs and services that could support and enhance the development of the district and ensure programs and services are accessible. So the whole idea of this is to have a, a group of people that can really just oversee the events. Get them going, get the funding for them, get the volunteers. As you know, sadly Carolyn Cole passed away recently and so I've stepped in to try to help move this forward. There's three openings. There's two openings for, for full-time members and one opening for an alternate member. And we have three applications. None of the three could be with us tonight and so I just want to kind of run through them. Priscilla Armstrong, everybody knows her. One of the things that's important to this committee is to have connections with either be, being an artist or very strong arts connection. Priscilla, I didn't see this in her application, but she works with ECAT. And the ECAT relationship with the cultural district is very important. Because they do, they participate in a lot of the events. Jason Daniels used to be on a committee that did that and because of. You know, work hours and so forth, he had to step away. So that's a really strong connection for the district. Fred Ames, you know, everyone knows Fred. Fred brings his relationship with the hall to the cultural district, which is very important. A number of the events are held there and the district and the hall support each other. And then a new applicant, Phyllis, I'll, I'll never be able to say her last name, right? It's, I believe, De La, De La Rischler. She is somebody new to town who has an extensive background in the performing arts and she really is going to be bringing some of that programming to Easton. So she's an actual artist from that perspective. So what I'd recommend, because we have the three openings and the three positions, I would. I would make a recommendation to have Phyllis and Priscilla have the member seats and then have Fred as the alternate. And I will say that, you know, committees like this that are really kind of roll up your sleeves and get the work done committees. The reason that there's alternates are because of quorum, but usually every, you know, anybody, anyone from the public can go to these meetings also. They're public meetings. The more people, the better, the more ideas, the more creativity. So it's, it's hard to pick, to move the people where they are, but I just think that Priscilla's role with ECAT and Phyllis's role with the arts are very strong. And then Fred will certainly be able to do the same, same work and have the same participation as everyone else. So anybody have any comments or questions?
So are we gonna vote it as a slate, Daddy? Is that your recommendation?
I don't, I don't know if we can do that. Because there's different term expirations on here.
As long as you, if you list through them and that's perfectly fine, if you would like.
All right, so if, if we do a motion to, so one, one term expires June 30th, 2022. The next one is June 30th, 2023. So if we did. Priscilla for 22 and Phyllis for 23, the two P names I'm trying to keep straight. And then the alternate member would expire on June 30th and that would be Fred. Did you get that? So we can, we can vote that as a slate. So a motion, a second, and then we'll do a roll call vote.
I, I move that we support the slate.
Second, Lamb.
Roger and Lamb?
Barger slate.
Lamb slate.
Evans slate.
AC slate.
And full genetti slate. For stepping up, it's an important, important role. Next, we have acceptance of a resignation from Carol Lundeen on the Conservation Commission. So Carol had served for, I think, a full term and we really appreciate her participating. That's a really challenging ward. There's a lot to learn and we, we are grateful for her to commit her time and energy to that ward, so. If somebody would like to make a motion to accept her resignation and then that would be also a motion, a second and a roll call vote.
I move to accept Lon, Lon Bean's resignation.
Second, Lamb.
Barger Lundeen.
Lamb Lundeen.
Stebbins Lundeen.
AC Lundeen.
And full genetti Lundeen. So we accept that resignation with regret. Next, we have a Conservation Commission appointment for Albert Benson and that would be with a term expiration of June 30th. I think Mr. Benson is here tonight if he wants to get moved into the main room here.
Daddy, is that June, June of 22?
Hold on a second. Yes, June, June 30th, 22.
22, okay.
So just to mention what the Eastern Conservation Commission, the Conservation Commission is responsible for planning for natural resource protection, acquiring important land and water areas. And managing these properties for natural conservation and passive recreation as set forth in the 1957 Conservation Commission Act. Which authorized each city and town in Massachusetts to establish a locally-appointed municipal agency to undertake these responsibilities. The rest of the detail on that is in the packet and welcome, Mr. Benson. Thank you for being here tonight.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
If you could tell us a little bit about yourself and your background and what interests you about the Conservation Commission. I love the background that you have behind you on, on here. Very appropriate for this interview.
Thank you. My background is basically in, in energy and I noted that with interest that you have. A list of the climate details that also falls under that program. So also I have an ability and working knowledge of maps and map making. So the topographical maps that I see pictured by the, and used by the Conservation Committee is something that I'm very familiar with. My education is, I have a degree in geology, a bachelor's in business and a master's in finance. Previous, and I've worked with Mobile Oil Corporation for over 30 years. And then also put in time with the Department of Public Utilities here in Massachusetts. As well as the US Department of Energy in the Boston Regional Office as a project manager. So, you know, a lot of energy and, and a lot of map, map making. The largest map-making project that I worked on was for Olin Mathis. And working on the mapping and doing all the evaluation work on 55 square miles of phosphate mining capability in Florida, so. Very much familiar with that. And I also have spent with time in Vietnam and Korea as a engineer officer, Corps of Engineers.
Right. So. Thank you. We're gonna go around the board members to see if they have questions, starting with Craig.
Mr. Benson, thank you for applying. We appreciate your interest. I just have a quick question about balancing the need for. Economic development with the need for conservation. How you, how you manage those two very important issues.
That's, that's a good question. One of the things, I also spent time on your finance committee as well as the building committee. So I have had a reasonable amount of time on understanding the town's finance, so. Also with a master's in finance, it's something that I will look at very heavily, so. And project economics is something that I did significant work with at Mobile Oil Corporation.
Thank you. Mark?
Mr. Benson, how are you?
Good, thank you, Mark.
Outstanding. It's very clear you're qualified. You have an incredible background. And I have no doubt that you would be able to serve very well in this capacity. But my question to you, sir, is with regards to Conservation Commission in Easton. Do you have anything you see in particular that you appreciate or seek to change? There's no right or wrong answer and there could also be no answer. Just curious where your mind is at.
Well, one of the things that I'm interested in is, is learning more about your inventory of greenhouse gases. And if I changed one thing, there may be a ability to get finance from other places and after. Let's say emissions-saving devices are identified and. That's one thing that I think I could run through and I know Connor would be very helpful and I've worked together on a couple of issues in the past. So anyway, that, that's, the greenhouse gas, I think, is, is a key one that I, I'd like to focus on.
Thank you.
Jamie?
Yeah, thank you, Sir Benson. Yeah, like Mark said, looking at your background, there's, there's certainly a lot to lean on here. When you were on the finance committee, can you speak to maybe some initiatives you worked on there? And, and maybe changes you made, some, some outcomes of your, your time here in, in the Eastern Finance Committee?
Yeah, I worked with the police department as their liaison and coordinator. I also did a study of all the, let's say, same-size libraries in the state in the area of 25,000 people. Detailed study of that to identify how big the library was, how many staff was used. You know, and to understand where we stood in that overall mix. Unfortunately. Let's say at the time, the war did not want to take actions on reducing, even though the statistics were very clear. That we were significantly overstaffed and I could go back to the point that the staffing was increased. In the expectation that a major library extension and building program would be implemented. That program was never approved by the town. And yet the staff was increased to the level of, well, highest in any town of this size. So I, I failed on that one.
Wouldn't call it failure. I'm, I'm gonna ask one other question, just switch gears a little bit. Any stigma you've had to overcome associated with your background with mobile and, and for instance now, some, some could see this as. You know, between Conservation Commission and, and obviously you're a geologist, so you, you, you too probably had to. Overcome some cognitive dissonance in your own career, but can you speak to, yeah, can you speak to that a little bit for us?
Yeah, I, in the height of the, the first oil crisis, I was working the investment desk, which handles all the money coming in from overseas. The last day of the year. In fact, there were only a couple of us in the whole big office building and. A friend called and, and he said, I'm surprised you're there. I said, well, somebody has to stay here and screw the public. Anyway, I was kidding. I left the oil company in. And came up to Massachusetts. To work on Mobile Solar Energy Corporation. Because I could see what was coming down the road from the scarcity and the environmental issues that were already known to the people in the industry at the time. And I stayed with Mobile Solar until it. Was closed by Mobile Oil Corporation. And I was their manager and new business development. So. As part of that position, I worked with the National Association of Regulatory Utility Commissioners. And put together several volumes on utility outlet. Utility production, which is not only the, the cost, but all the emissions. And on both all aspects of, of the utility generating. So. My view and my effort working with them was to increase the amount of renewables that were going into the grid. And it was not, I wasn't pushing gas. I was not pushing. You know, any type of combustion, but it was the renewables such as. Wind and mobile so, and solar that we were interested. I was interested in promoting.
What year? Oh, I was just gonna ask you, what, what year did mobile shut down Mobile Solar?
That was, let's see, 90.
Okay. And, and my last question for you, because we hear this term being thrown around quite a bit right now. Do you feel there is greenwashing going on with regards to energy companies today and, you know, the initiatives that they've put forth? Versus what their actual intentions may be?
I, I would have to say no. I think it's farcical. A point to ask, Exxon is an example and point. Their green. Let's say algae production to turn into biofuel is, is a, it's a farce. And they're not, they're not interested in that. They're gonna try to preserve their production and their economics as long as possible, so. The, the things like, you know, more wind, more solar, more solar thermal that we can put in, reduction of, of. Any kind of energy uses through efficiency. Those are all good issues and greenhouse gas. The, the problem we're facing is real. One of the first things I did at Mobile Solar when I got there was to ask one of our PhDs. Scientists to, to really prove to me in mathematical terms that greenhouse gas is a concern. And she was very able to do that in just no uncertainty in my mind. And that just reaffirmed our, you know, what we were trying to do. And I'm sorry.
No, and thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Benson.
Jen?
Amy is on fire tonight with those questions and actually stole my fair one. So I thank you so much. Actually, my question was around the, kind of the, your, your role, your career and the. Potential for pushback or people's perceptions of what that meant. So thank you for that answer. And I think you've sort of answered it in multiple places, but the question I had, my backup question was around the role of com, the Conservation Commission. Explicitly ends climate change and, and kind of forward-thinking, environmental thinking. So if anything you want to add that you maybe haven't said already, to kind of help give a little more flavor to your feelings about this.
No, I think, I think with the, with the US Department of Energy, that was our sole job, was conservation renewable energy implementation. So another failure, I'm sorry to say, was Cape Wind. I worked on that with the. With all the concerned parties, EPA, DOE, the state, Coast Guard. That whole project and unfortunately. Let's say the moneyed interest on the Cape prevailed. So, but one thing that did come out of that that I'm happy with, I did have a chance to put together a study that. Detailed every step that would have to be taken by a wind developer offshore of the United States. And that was used not only in Massachusetts, but the Wind Energy Association picked that up and has been using it. Now, each state has its own regulations, so that's on top of it. But at least the federal regulations were were well defined.
You actually made me think of another question as you were speaking too about the different players involved and how they can cause a situation to be a failure. But do you have an example of a partnership or some sort of working together across boundaries where things they end result was positive and maybe speak to your role in that?
One of the the my favorite was a, I don't know if you've ever heard the term environmental externalities. It's basically the uncosted harm that's done by emissions. And it's not only it could be in water use, it could be in gas emissions, it could be land degradation associated with power plant production, those whole range. I was actually helpful in getting that adopted in the United States by a number of states. This was actually developed, the concept was developed in Germany. We paid at Mobile Solar to bring two experts into Massachusetts. And Massachusetts was the first state to adopt such planning regulations. So that was widely spread after that.
Thank you.
So I think that we have some people that are passionate about energy, it seems. And so the questions have gone a little bit out of scope from where we usually interview people for for their roles on boards and committees. I would say that the Conservation Commission is very important for somebody that would would understand and be interested in learning about the regulations, because there's pretty clear-cut guidelines to how the Conservation Commission can operate. Rory Calphelt, who is the chair, is an amazing leader, and he's been doing a great job with that board for the past several years. And and the commissioners on there are all very dedicated. So with with the background that you have, I'm sure that you'll fit right in as someone.
A lot to learn, though.
And well, as somebody that can can learn and understand the regulations and make sound decisions. So I I know that I met you once when we were on the school. I'm on the School Planning Committee, and you were on the Energy Subcommittee talking about that in your role on the Building Municipal Building Committee. And I hadn't met you before, and I didn't know anything about you. And then all of a sudden, I heard you talking about some of these energy things. And I was really quite impressed with your history and your background. So.
Thank you.
And if somebody would like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Benson with a term expiration of June 30th, 2022, to the Conservation Commission? Craig, you're on mute. Want to say that again?
So move, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb, and it's a roll call vote, Craig?
Barger Benson.
Lamb Benson.
Evans Benson.
Casey Benson.
And full Janetti Benson. So the clerk, the clerk will be in touch with you about getting sworn in and with the meeting schedule. And before you leave, I'd just like to thank you for your service to the community and also for your service to the country.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Benson.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have a discussion and vote regarding special counsel services for cable license renewals. And we have Mr. Solomon here for that.
We do. So just a bit of a refresher. You can tell you've been doing something for a long time when five and 10-year agreements come up multiple times. We recently, it feels, executed successor cable franchise agreements with both Verizon and Comcast, I believe, in 2019. And under federal and state cable regulation laws, you are supposed to begin that process of negotiating a successor license roughly three years out from the expiration. And so in the case of Verizon, which did a five-year license at that time, we're now entering that window. And so the first step will be for us to retain special counsel, because cable law, I've learned, and Attorney Solomon can speak to, is remarkably specific and pretty difficult to navigate. We worked with Attorney Solomon three years ago. I felt like we got a really good result. We increased capital funding to ECAT, increased operational funding by 25%. And that was, and it was a professional and productive negotiation with the utilities. So in your packet tonight is a proposed legal agreement retaining. Word typically votes to do so. And we also have Attorney Solomon here just to give a brief overview, because we did not have all the current members. So, Dottie, if it's all right with you, I would just ask Attorney Solomon, just can you give a 10,000-foot view of what renewal process is? How that works?
Thank you, Connor. It's good to be back, working with Connor, working with the Chair of the Cable Advisory Committee, who was instrumental in getting the Verizon renewal last time and the Comcast renewal. In a nutshell, Verizon licensing is very different from Comcast licensing, mostly because Comcast is a traditional cable company that wants to be a cable company as long as it can. Verizon, on the other hand, you know, has led Wall Street know and let publicly know that it's looking to move in the near future, if they can, and I think it's going to take a lot longer than they think, to a streaming paradigm where possibly all of their customers would be wireless customers, Verizon wireless customers. So what's happened over the years is that the initial licenses that came about 15 years ago were 10-year cable licenses. And that's that's typical. Some licenses were 15 years, but many were 10. But on the renewals, Verizon, in all but six instances, did a five-year license renewal. That's why we're back here now. And since Easton signed its 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 Verizon license, that Verizon licenses now have a three-year unilateral out for Verizon. Now, in exchange for that, Verizon fairly negotiates the financial terms of a cable license, so that towns get their money within three years. And I would say that they're they're still seriously negotiating fair cable licenses. Their focus is on the legal provisions more than it is, frankly, even the dollars, although they're concerned about that also. But before they even negotiate the dollars, they want to reach agreement on the legal provisions. Easton has, and I think it's fair to say, the license where there's none better in the Commonwealth in terms of the legal language and in terms of the funding, you're at the very top echelon. That was very much the work of your team and Connor. And so what we look to do here is to cost-effectively negotiate with Verizon to encourage them to negotiate sooner rather than later, because in a world where they seek to move to a different paradigm, they may not be interested in negotiating the 2024 expiration license in 2022. We're going to meet with them, encourage them to move forward as 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 quickly as possible. And and in cable, those relationships and that contact makes a large difference. So what I do know is that the unknown is where Verizon is going to be. What is known, and to me, is that one is, I I I believe we'll have a renewal license with Verizon. I'm confident based on the existing license and the work we're going to do. It'll be an excellent license in its legal terms, its policy terms, and its financial terms. But what we can't control is the video market, and we can't control where Verizon is at the time. But we'll be working hard to make sure that that Easton's interests are understood as they were before and that we get a license that meets the cable needs of the town.
Any questions from any of the board members?
Mr. Solomon, just, so we're negotiating the Verizon, but the Comcast is in a different timeframe?
Yeah, they both were signed around the same time. Verizon slightly, Comcast, Verizon was first and then Comcast, but a few months apart. But, you know, maybe six months. The Comcast license was a typical 10-year renewal. So that has five plus two years, about seven years left, where the Verizon license was the five-year renewal. And now we're we're within the what's called a three-year license renewal period. So that that's right. We're only negotiating the the Verizon license at this point. But both lives, when you involve in cable licensing, each license affects the other, because the companies have their sense of what they would, they'd like to see as a level playing field. But the companies are very different in different approaches. So but we will only be negotiating now with Verizon. We have about seven years left on the on the Comcast license.
Thank you.
Mark? Nope. Jamie? No. Jen?
No questions. Thank you.
I think you did such a good job with us the last time. We appreciate your service, and we're glad that you're back here again to offer your services to us in this renewal. So our vote is to to enter into an agreement with Mr. Solomon, our attorney Solomon, for this negotiation. And that agreement is in the packet. So if somebody would like to make a motion?
So move, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb. Back to you, Craig.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
AC, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. So thank you so much for being.
Well, well, thank you. I I say that I got to know Easton a little bit last time two amazing hearings and and being around town at a different time than than COVID. And it was a remark, it is a remarkable town. It is my pleasure to get to know some of the residents and some part and different areas of the town, including some of the restaurants. And I'm very glad, I'm very glad to be back. And I hope to be back there in person also on critical occasions.
Terrific. Well, we welcome you back. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Bye-bye. Thank you.
Okay. So next, we have a discussion and a vote for a proclamation to fostering anti-racism. And we have Liz Bornstein from the Human Rights Committee. And we we have Denise Lane. I think Denise was going to join us as well. So just to give a little bit of background on this, about a year ago, there was some some bubbling up of anti-racist language and and actions in our community. And so Raising Multicultural Kids representatives worked with the Human Rights Committee to talk about how we could come up with a proclamation of anti-racism. As this board knows, every year, right after the election, we do our Statement of Ethics and Values. And last year, we worked to create a statement of diversity and inclusion. So we really care about these issues. We wanted to make sure that this was really something that that had a lot of thought and collaboration, not just from our experts at the Human Rights Committee and Raising Multicultural Kids. But we want the community to really, you know, sometimes you can just put things on a paper and check off the box, and nobody thinks about it again. We wanted people to really know about this and people to really take action with this. And, you know, we really appreciate the efforts from both organizations to do that. Liz, did you want to comment on anything before I read the proclamation?
Um, I thank you for having me. I do want to add Denise is here but driving, so she cannot join the video conference. Although Dawn Perry is also here and available to speak on RMK's behalf.
Okay, terrific. So while we moved on over, let me just read the proclamation so that people know what we're talking about. So this is from the Human Rights Committee. And the Human Rights Committee was appointed by the Select Board to act as our voice on these kinds of issues. So this says, "We recognize that neither a resolution nor a single action will change a community, but rather that we are all responsible, both individually and collectively, for creating and fostering an anti-racist and unbiased community. We must therefore actively acknowledge and stand up against bias and discrimination of any kind. Whereas we acknowledge the history of systemic racism in the United States and in Easton. And whereas we strongly condemn acts of oppression in all forms, including institutionalized racism, which has targeted Black people, indigenous people, and and people of color. And whereas we respect the contributions, traditions, and different experiences of all who live, work, study, worship, or visit in Easton. And whereas we commit to the equal protection of the constitutional and human rights for all and to becoming a diverse, inclusive, welcoming, and supportive community. And whereas we acknowledge that the privileges that white people experience may inhibit them from fully understanding how racism impacts Black people, indigenous people, and people of color in America. For example, the performance of simple tasks like driving, walking in neighborhoods, or just going to a park may come with certain risks not experienced by others. Life events like getting a job, purchasing a home, buying a car, or raising a family come with barriers that white people may not understand, realize, or ever experience. Now, therefore, be it resolved, we encourage open dialogue about racism, discrimination, injustice, and hate, as well as exploration of ways in which Easton could promote the fair and equal treatment of all persons residing in and visiting our community. And therefore, it be further resolved. We support and encourage social and educational programs aimed at understanding and dismantling racial, ethnic, and other biases within our community." And then there's lines to have it be signed by the Human Rights Committee, the Chair of the Select Board, the Superintendent of Schools, the School Committee, Raising Multicultural Kids, the Town Administrator, the Civil Rights Officer, and the Director of the Ames Free Library. So do you want to just tell us a little bit about the efforts on this, Liz?
Yeah, this has been the process of a full year-plus worth of discussion and close partnership with Raising Multicultural Kids to help develop the language for the proclamation. And we are in the process of speaking with all of the signatories that you mentioned. And they are listed because they are and have been in the past strong allies for the rationale and the purpose of the proclamation, as well as strong leaders in the town. And I would just to piggyback on Officer Chief Chief Sullivan's retirement, the police has been a really great partner and ally for these sorts of issues. And we have that same partnership with the Civil Rights Officer Keith Boone.
Thank you. And Dawn, you're you've done a lot of work with Raising Multicultural Kids, and we really appreciate your work on that.
Thank you. Thanks for having us here. I'm not certain why my camera is sideways. Trying to adjust that, but technically incapable. But we appreciate working with HRC and their the collaboration, actually, and getting it advanced to the stage that we we now have it in a final form. And we appreciate your consideration of it this evening.
Thank you. One of the things that I think is important, like I said, is taking action on these things. You know, we, when we, as the Select Board, did our Statement of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, we worked hard on that. We thought about it a lot. We actually took a year to really make sure that we were doing something that had action that we could think of. We didn't get any comments. And, you know, I posted it on social media, and, you know, really, nobody knew about it. So I hope that people, you know, once this is, once this is out and signed, I hope people will think about it, talk about it with your friends, share it on social media. Really take action on this. I know the Human Rights Committee has had bystander trainings on what to do if you see things happening or you hear things happening. The schools have been very active in that. We want to really make sure that that we stand by the the actions in this, be a welcoming community, and really learn to understand each other, ask questions, and and participate. So thank you both. Any comments or questions? Craig, you're on the Human Rights Committee. Did you want to start?
I just want to say that I am so impressed with the members of the Human Rights Committee and the members of RMK for the work that they do. And I I particularly appreciate Liz for her leadership over the years. And this this took a year, but I think it's the right thing to do for this community.
Thanks, Greg. Mark?
Yes, I echo the same. I know you all worked really hard on this. It was a combined effort between RMK and the Human Rights Committee. And you put a lot of time into it. And I think one of the most important things, I look forward to more conversation on every side of this equation. I know I have, you know, my own personal thoughts and a lot of things I, you know, still seek to figure out. But I look forward to continuing conversation.
Thanks, Mark. Jamie?
I apologize. They're closing down my office. I had to make sure they didn't set the alarm on me. So I I just couldn't be more proud when I look at the group. Um, so I, I, I just couldn't be more proud when I look at the group in this meeting tonight. I know that there is not a lot of diversity, uh, among us, however, the, the thought and effort, uh, that a number of people, you know, every, you know, Craig, Dottie, Mark, Liz, thank you for your work and, and Dawn. I have an equal opportunity background, uh, in the military of all places, but it really gave me an opportunity to work with some zero tolerance policies and to really educate and, and go through some really tough training when it came to learning about white privilege. And something that is, we, we are blind to, we're, we're, um, you know, just recently having read a couple of really great books, uh, The Sum of Us and Just Mercy. And you start to understand and, and just digest, the, the level of civil discourse that still needs to happen as we try to further and become better educated and, and just better communicators and, um, and partners. Uh, you know, diversity is just too broadly, you know, painted out there. Every, everyone wants to, be part of a, you know, diverse organization, but what it really means is hard work. And so I think some really introspective, some tough work when you, when you look in the mirror and you try to, uh, do that work as an individual and then with a group, because it starts inside and being able to, um, understand your own, upbringing and, and what has formed your thoughts from a very early age and all the stages that led up to, you know, where we are as adults. So I'm very proud, um, of this town, this community. I know we're making strides. Will never be done. Um, but, but hopefully we keep bringing more and more people along. So thank you for all the hard work.
Jen?
I'd agree. Thank you so much. Um, it, this is so thoughtful and the fact that it took a year. It really, it really reflects that it was so intentional that there was time spent thinking about every word here meant and the gravity of it and the importance of it and the value it brings to the community. Um, so thank you for that because it, you know, it would be easy to go and write up a document and kind of, you know, but like Jamie's saying, like, it's, you know, it's easy to kind of put things out there and not have it mean anything, but it's clear that this was done with so much intention. So thank you because it sets a really important tone and, um, continues to expand a really important dialogue that our community needs to continue having, um, now and for, you know, in the future. So thank you so much for that.
So with that, we'll, uh, take a vote to, um, accept this proclamation and I will sign it on behalf of the Select Board. So Craig, if you want to make a motion?
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Roger and Lamb. Back to you, Craig.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
AC, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. And, you know, I love collaboration, especially on important issues like this. So RMK and the HRC to establish that relationship is really important. So thank you so much, um, Dawn and Liz for that. So the next item that we have on the agenda is also from the Human Rights Committee, asking about u- using a Stonehill gift. This, uh, the HRC would like to purchase more T-shirts with their new logo, um, from the design contest last winter, which had some amazing, um, entries. And they've been wearing the shirts at events. It's been so well received that people have asked if they, uh, could buy one. So they'd like to order a few dozen more, um, to have available at future HRC events. And Liz is modeling the, uh, shirt right there. So I think that, uh, not only just is the logo really incredible, but to have the, the community participation for people to, uh, to, to work on that together again and really understand it was, it was really wonderful. So does anybody have any comments or questions on, uh, voting the funds for the HRC? I think it's a great use of funds and, you know, usually what we like to try to do is, um, fund things from some of that, that money that we know are also aligned with the core values and the principles of Stonehill. And they really care about, um, about equity. And, um, I think that they're a big supporter of the Human Rights Committee as well and the work that you do. So I think it's a very appropriate expense. And, uh, Craig, if you'd like to make a motion to, um, to have us award $450 from that fund for the HRC's, um, T-shirt?
It's my pleasure to, uh, to, uh, offer that motion.
Second, Lamb.
That's Barger and Lamb. Back to you, Craig.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
AC, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. So thank you so much, Liz. Um, extend our, our, uh, gratefulness back to the rest of the committee and, uh, we appreciate your hard work.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the votes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Liz.
Next, uh, contract award for Phoenix Communications for installation of fiber optic cable at Red Mill Road, uh, Treatment Plant, which is for DPW 2022 dash 22. Connor, you want to tell us about that?
Uh, sure. So given the, uh, number of items on the agenda, uh, Dottie and I did not, uh, ask the department heads to come in for these next two contracts. So this first one, uh, is for the necessary fiber optic, uh, connection, uh, for the, uh, forthcoming Red Mill Road Water Treatment Plant in order for it to be, uh, connected to the town's, uh, fiber network that we maintain. This provides SCADA, uh, well monitoring and system monitoring capabilities, phone data and security. Uh, contract is $95,920. Uh, this company, Phoenix, is on the state, uh, certified procurement list. Uh, and funding for this is included in the $15.6 million appropriation for the project. Dave, uh, Field recommends award and so do I.
Any questions?
I do have a quick question. Sorry, Craig. Didn't want to, didn't want to go right to a vote.
I don't have any questions yet.
Okay. Um, Connor, I don't know if this is a question for you or Dave, and you know, there's, I'm curious about a couple of things, but that's more just curiosity. Does this include the cost of the fiber?
Uh, yes, this is, it, or maybe this is for the installation of a cable.
Right, because I mean, I look at that price and I know that run. I mean, you're talking a few miles there, um, which will take some time. That I wouldn't, at that cost, I can't imagine it being the cost, the cost of fiber included in that, but I'm curious.
So the brief summary of the contract is for the installation of fiber optic. Give me one moment. I'll flip through to the, go. If that's attached.
And has the fiber been purchased already? Which kind of piggybacks on the last time Dave was in, um, and I, I pleaded with him to buy everything he can in advance, because, you know, prices are just going to increase.
Right, um, let me check if that's in a memo. So I don't have the detailed spec sheet that, uh, DPW has. I am assuming this is just for the installation work as far as a procurement of supplies. Given the size of this project, we are working with an owner's project management firm, just like we are with, uh, PFOS plants. And as you'll recall, um, we've been, uh, utilizing that exact practice that you're referencing to try to make sure that we procure, uh, as many supplies as possible in advance for the reason you're talking about with inflation. I believe you purchased about $2 million filters for those plants. So, um, I'll circle back with Dave and, uh, confirm that and, uh, send an email to the board.
I would, I would be remiss if I didn't continually ask, uh, just for purchasing to be made as soon as possible. Uh, and I'll sound like I'm on repeat as these meetings continue, but I'm gonna, and I know you're on it, but I'm gonna keep saying it.
Thank you.
Are you comfortable with a vote because it
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yes. Yes.
Anyone else? All right, Craig, would you like to, um, make a motion to award this contract to Phoenix Communications for installation of fiber optic cable?
And the contract value was $95,920. So moved.
Second, Lamb.
Roger and Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
AC, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. Next, we have a discussion and vote for Woodall Construction for the Sam Wright Field Wetland Flood Plane Restoration Project, PCD 2022 dash 02.
I thank you, Dottie. So attached in your packet is a memo from Land Use and Environmental Planner, uh, Jen Carlini, who is at a conservation meeting and, and be here tonight. Uh, as the board will recall, uh, shortly before COVID, Easton, uh, became a municipal vulnerability preparedness community and was one of the first rounds of communities welcomed into that grant program for climate, uh, resiliency. Uh, we received a grant, uh, shy of 200,000 to restore 100,000 square feet of wetland and flood plain, uh, functions, uh, near the former Sam Wright Field. There was, uh, some COVID induced stalling on the project, but survey work was completed. And the, uh, state agency that administers this grant allowed the remaining funds for construction to be rolled over and extended through, uh, this coming June. Uh, last fall, the work restarted. Uh, the, uh, our engineers determined the, uh, low bidder, uh, to be Woodall for $39,998. Includes excavation services to remove and dispose of soils associated with, uh, the creation of a flood plain compensation area and a permanent stabilization of the site and reseating. I recommend award.
Any questions?
Yeah, Dottie, I, sorry. Um, Dottie, I was just ve- very surprised at how inexpensive it is relative to all the other bidders. And, and I, I always get nervous about that. Connor, is there a, um, contingency, contingency in case the price actually is greater than that $39.9?
Well, so under any procurement circumstance, uh, bidders provide what they think will be the total cost to perform a work. And in this case, we've had an engineering firm, Woodard and Curran, who we've worked with on a variety of civil engineering matters, uh, ranging from wetlands work like this to peer review to designing our sewer systems, uh, do reference checks and, and verify on the town's behalf that they believe that that bidder is, uh, under the law, what's called responsive and responsible, which means able to, to do that work. Change orders can and frequently do happen. Uh, typically they're, they're capped, um, uh, 25% of the contract. But with any, uh, contract, uh, that we have, part of that is just the responsibility of the department and ongoing contract management working with the engineers, uh, to make sure that that's sticking on schedule.
Okay, I was just surprised at the, at the discrepancy between them and, and the, all the other bidders. It's quite significant. That's that's why I raised the question.
Mark?
Uh, yes, where's 445 Bay Road? I can't, I looked it up. It's not, it's a, it doesn't even, doesn't even show up.
One moment. Find a map quickly.
It is on the left-hand side. It's the large, uh, field, uh, on the left-hand side of Bay Road heading north from Norton, uh, before you get to Highland Street.
Right. It's the, um, is that the old farm?
I believe so.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, uh, would somebody, Craig, would you like to make a motion to award, uh, Project PCD 2022 dash 02 to Woodall Construction for the Sam Wright Field Wetland Flood Plains Restoration? And the amount, um, of not $39,998?
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb. Back to you, Craig.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
AC, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. All right. Next, we have, um, the vote to reappoint Barbara Lerner to the Board of Registries for a term expiration of March 31st, 2025. So in our packet, uh, we have an email from Craig as chairperson of the Easton Democratic Town Committee, uh, that the Easton DTC voted to recommend reappointment of Barbara Lerner to the position of voter registrar. Any comments or questions from the board? Pretty standard.
Should I recuse myself since I made the motion or?
Yeah, you, you can recuse yourself. Mark, if you'd like to make a motion?
So moved, Lamb.
Second, Stevens.
Lamb, Stevens, back to you.
Lamb, Lerner.
Stevens, Lerner.
AC, Lerner.
And full Janetti, Lerner. And for the minutes, just, um, make note that select person, um, Barger, um, recused himself. The next one is the acceptance of resignation from Michelle Durant's, uh, for the MBTA Authority Community Zoning Implementation Review Team. Boy, our committees' names are getting longer and longer. For a term expiring, her, her term was expiring March 24th, 2022. These, uh, board meetings have been meeting during the day and Michelle has work conflicts, so she can't, uh, she can't join those meetings. So if we could get a motion to accept her resignation a second and then a roll call vote?
Roger. Yes, I mean, Barger, yes. Motion to, to approve, um, Michelle Durant's resignation.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb. Back to you, Craig.
Barger Durant.
Lamb Durant.
Evans Durant.
AC Durant.
And full Janetti Durant. So the other half of that is to appoint, uh, Nancy DeLuca to the position that, that Michelle had. Um, and that would also be for a term expiration of March 24th, 2022. And that's for the MBTA Authority Community Zoning Implementation Review Team. Would you like to make a motion in a second and a roll call vote, Craig?
Sure, I, I move that Nancy DeLuca, um, be appointed to the Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority Community Zoning Implementation Review Team.
My second, Lamb.
Back to you, Craig.
Barger DeLuca.
Lamb DeLuca.
Evans DeLuca.
AC DeLuca.
And full Janetti DeLuca. Thank you. Um, next is a discussion and vote of a temporary moratorium on the issuance of two newly available Section 15 Off-Premises Package Store Liquor Licenses to evaluate and coordinate the issuance of said licenses with the town's long-term planning goals. So, um, Michael is here, uh, Assistant Town Administrator, Michael Blanchard is here to talk about this. Um, he's done a lot of work on this and we really appreciate it. So if you want to tell us a little bit about it, Michael?
Absolutely. Everybody, um, so by way of background, each Massachusetts community has a liquor license quota that's based on state law and is based on the most recent federal census population. So with our population growth just recently identified in the 2020 federal census, Easton has been allotted two additional package store licenses, um, one of which is an all alcohol license and one is a beer and wine. So it's an unusual situation. Um, we have been full, uh, and really the only way, uh, licenses have moved is through transfers of licenses or have two new ones available is kind of unique. Under normal, uh, course of business, license or handle are first come, first served basis. So someone could walk in today with a notification and they're evaluating that just by itself. And, um, you know, as long as they kind of check all the boxes, under most situations, you're, you're issuing that license. Instead of reacting to, you know, individual applications that could come in at any time or sporadically, uh, tonight we're recommending the Slack Board develop a plan and process to solicit and evaluate proposals for the two new licenses. What this would do is allow you to review all the proposals that, um, interested people would submit at the same time. And to allow you to make a, a good determination of what would be in the best interest of the town's long-term planning goals. That could be, um, you know, location, whether it's a standalone or within existing business. Someone we're familiar with or someone from our town. So tonight, uh, in order to provide you with time to develop a plan, we've worked with town council to recommend a temporary moratorium on the issuance of the two new package store license. Um, this, uh, temporary moratorium would only apply to these two licenses, not any others that could be available. It wouldn't apply to license transfers. It would just be these two package store licenses as a result of the new federal census, uh, numbers. Uh, we're working now on a plan, uh, to present to you a specific solicitation plan, a procedure, and we'll present that to your, your next meeting, which I believe is March 14th, uh, for your consideration. If you were to approve at that time, we would then go forward and advertise if the license is available, share with potential applicants what the process would be for them to follow. And then, um, once we receive those, uh, you know, letters of intent or whatever the final decision is, we'll schedule a meeting for those applicants to come in, present to you. And then you would invite, uh, in theory, two of them to apply for, for the actual full license. So, uh, should the board wish to consider the temporary, temporary moratorium, there is a recommended motion packet. And, uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions that I have.
Sure. Um, Craig, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions at this time.
Mark?
I do have a quick question, uh, Mike, and, uh, you may have mentioned it. Are there people in the pipeline wanting this right now? I do have a quick question, Mike, and you may have mentioned it. Are there people in the pipeline wanting this right now?
We've received inquiries, no one submitted an actual application, but there are people who are very interested in. I believe will submit proposals once you put out a specific plan.
My whole comment is I do like this idea, having liquor stores pop up anywhere and everywhere is, you know, in my estimation, not a great idea. So to. To go about it this way, I think is smart.
Jamie?
No questions, thank you, Michael.
Jen?
No questions, agree, it's a very sound approach.
Yeah, I think it's very important, you know, when we're looking at, these are actually economic development drivers and, you know, we. For, you know, at Roach Brothers, they the company that came in and opened up the little boutique in there. They were able to get a license and then we had to go back and get a. A special license for the one that was down in Target and that's the big why, I believe. So that took a long time, that took like a year, and these are really strategic for us to use in areas where we do want to have economic development. So having us have the applicants put some thought into that and have us really look at it in terms of of economic development is really important. So I appreciate you advising us on this, Michael. It's it's a very sound way to move forward on it. So if Craig, if you want to make a motion that's listed in the packet.
I move to declare a temporary moratorium on the issuance of two newly available section fifteen off premises package store liquor licenses. Through April twenty first, uh twenty fifth, two thousand twenty two. To evaluate and coordinate the issuance of said licenses with the town's long term planning goals.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb, back to you, Craig.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
A C, yes.
And full genetti, yes. So we'll have to wait ten more years to do that again. Thank you, Michael, appreciate all your work on that.
Absolutely, thank you.
So next we have the town administrators' presentation for the first fiscal year twenty twenty three preliminary operating budget.
Thank you, Dottie. In your packet, we were a little ahead of schedule with our concern for snow. So the board has had the preliminary budget memo and proposal for a few days now. And I'm going to try to as quickly as possible cover the ground that the memo does. A majority of this presentation is going to focus on the revenue dynamics of a town is facing because at this early stage of a budget process, that is the most. Consequential for where we end up by the time we get to town meeting in May. So. Fiscal twenty three, if you can believe it, will be the third annual budget that we work on together since COVID began. Leading up to this, we had fiscal twenty one, which was of course a very draconian and difficult budget year where we cut. More than two dozen positions between the town and school government in order to meet anticipated revenue shortfalls. The silver lining of that is that those difficult choices two years ago, coupled with federal aid. Resulted in a extraordinarily high free cash balance at the end of fiscal twenty one, which just closed last June. In fiscal twenty two, that budget took the first steps towards recovery from deeply regressive COVID era cuts. But more work remains unfinished as staff levels still remain well below pre-COVID norms. Moving into fiscal twenty three, longstanding revenue challenges particularly and especially this year, the inadequate. And unsustainable funding of state aid will frustrate our long term abilities to meet services. In the long term, but also immediate term this year. And so where we start, the budget process this year is a preliminary budget with projected revenues of about ninety six point four million. And preliminary expenses of ninety seven and a half, leaving a deficit of one point one million. So just to touch on our different revenue categories, and I'm going to go in order of size and consequence to the budget. On the left, you see a pie chart of where the town of Eastern collects its revenue from. And taxation this year will grow to seventy five percent of our total revenue. Coming from property taxation. After that, you have state aid as our second largest, although shrinking proportion of revenue. Local receipts and then other revenues, including reserves. The board is aware, cities and towns in Massachusetts are limited to how much they can increase the property tax levy every year to two and a half percent plus any new growth. We've worked pretty aggressively in Easton, particularly in the past ten years to invest in tens of millions of dollars of infrastructure, mainly sewer and wastewater capacity. As well as reforms to zoning, to encourage mixed use and density. To try to encourage new development to create new growth. Because new growth outside of an override is the only way to grow that levy and share of a tax burden outside of an override. The tax levy will be increasing to sixty seven million this year. With a good portion of that being exempt debt associated with the financing of new school construction. So for reasons, we're going to get into more detail in the next series of slides regarding state aid. Eastern has had a structural revenue deficit borne out of a two thousand and eight financial crisis going on fifteen years now. Where other revenue sources that are important, particularly stated, have not kept up with inflation. And we're not keeping up with inflation before we are where we are in this current climate. Meaning that in order for us to just tread water, to just keep services level. We need to continue to fill that opportunity cost with property taxes, which creates a frustrating and and sometimes seemingly contradictory. Paradigm when you're a taxpayer, seeing your bill go up every year, but hearing that services aren't being funded at a higher level. Because those new dollars are effectively just going to fill holes created elsewhere. So moving into state aid. The fiscal year twenty three state aid figures contained in my budget proposal reflect Governor Baker's January budget filing for fiscal twenty three. State aid to Eastern is projected at just over thirteen million in that budget. That is an increase of one percent over the prior year. State aid is the second largest source of revenue in Eastern, it's critically important to fund all of our services. However, continually being underfunded in this category has resulted in that structural revenue deficit that I just alluded to. Where the town has, as a matter of policy, effectively no choice but to continue to rely increasingly on local taxes just to keep level services. State aid was once a full quarter of our revenue. So you could tell now all non-tax revenue is one quarter. And going into fiscal twenty three for the first time, state revenue will be less than fifteen percent of our revenue. So you saw the chart on the prior slide of the proportion of our income effectively that is constituted by taxation growing every successive year. And this is the inversion of that story where you see the proportion of income to the town of Eastern from the state of Massachusetts decline as a percentage of our revenue every year. Those are not coincidences, those are interrelated. Unlike local taxes, and I think this is really important, particularly in the current economic climate we're in. Local taxes are capped by law at two and a half percent. There's no inflation factor, which I'm fairly certain that taxpayers, including myself, are pretty happy about. But there is no inflation factor, there's no pandemic factor, it's two and a half percent and good times are bad. So those are capped, no matter what the economy or what state taxes or state tax revenue is doing. So while we are capped at two and a half percent, state tax revenue has exploded in Massachusetts since COVID and grown by nearly thirty percent. State taxes are driven by consumption far more than ours, so when people are spending more money at restaurants. Or at stores, whether due to increased consumer spending, which is a real factor, or due to increasing prices from inflation, state revenue grows with it. So we're in an environment where state revenue has grown almost thirty percent in recent years. And we'll get into the details, but the revenue to municipalities from state have not grown by thirty percent. There has been a longstanding revenue share model with the governor's administration that's been much appreciated and much relied on on a local level. And in its current state, that is not what is proposed. The dynamic we're dealing with with state aid poses the largest, in my opinion. Structural risk to the town's ability to maintain its service levels and meet its capital needs as we head into the future. This is going to be a little wonky and forgive me text heavy, but Finance Director did a great job this year pulling some really, really, really. Granular data, not just on state aid, which is constituted of primarily chapter seventy education and unrestricted aid. But digging into chapter seventy education funding, particularly in the wake of the Student Opportunity Act. For the Uninitiated Student Opportunity Act is a recent education reform funding law signed into Massachusetts. It has been heralded mostly positively for its significant increases in commitments of a state level to public education in Massachusetts. Which no one here would argue against, certainly. However. It does not get shared across all school districts. So chapter seventy is super important for Eastern out of that thirteen million dollar revenue from the state, more than ten million of that is chapter seventy. That is projected to increase at less than one percent to Eastern going into fiscal twenty two. And that's because Eastern is what's called a minimum aid community. We are one of a hundred and thirty five school districts in Massachusetts that fall into this camp. That's about one third of schools in Massachusetts. And what that means is that under the state funding formula. Based on things like the economic profile of the residents who live here of a local economy. The state believes that Eastern does not need that much of an increase in funding from the state because we should be able to get it from. Other areas such as taxes. So each successive year, again, no matter if inflation's one percent or seven. Eastern schools receive thirty more dollars per student. I didn't leave extra digits, that's not three hundred, that's not three thousand, it's thirty per child. This is completely insufficient, it equates to about a hundred thousand new dollars per year for a forty five million dollar education system. And this year over year has a compounding effect where we have to increasingly rely on the funding to fill that gap. The recently passed Student Opportunity Act has led to a significant infusion of additional state funds into chapter seventy education, which is great. However, that does not apply to minimum aid districts. We received the same minimum increase as we did before that reform. The governor's budget increases chapter seventy spending by about a half billion, almost nine percent, which is commendable. However, only nine million out of that five hundred million goes to minimum aid districts. So one third of schools in Massachusetts will get two percent of that increase. The other two thirds of schools will get the other ninety eight percent. So what that yields is that minimum aid districts, including Eastern, average zero point seven percent increases in state education funding. While all other districts are going to see closer to eleven and a quarter percent in education funding. In Eastern, if we were to receive an eleven and a quarter percent increase to chapter seventy, that would be more than a million dollars. The second component of state aid that's important to understand is what's called unrestricted general government aid, lovingly known as U G A. So unlike chapter seventy, which has statutory restrictions on the funding formula, if you are minimum aid, you get thirty dollars, period. Unrestricted general government aid has basically been funded with a handshake, good faith agreement between the governor's administration, lawmakers of the Commonwealth and municipal government. Where the perspective is basically whatever the state consensus on their revenue growth is. That's the number you're going to see for U G A. It's been reliable, it's been predictable, and it's been mostly equitable. Critically for Eastern as a minimum aid community, it's really our only area of potential growth in state aid. The current fiscal twenty three state budget unfortunately uses a revenue forecast for twenty three based on an adjusted fiscal twenty two number. That is millions and millions and millions of dollars higher than what the state actually made their budget with a year ago. They basically adjusted their fiscal twenty two number to reflect the historic level of tax increase, of revenue increase they've seen. And so you're effectively deleting all of that growth. If you see, look at this graph here that's been kindly provided by the Massachusetts Municipal Association. You will see the red line is the unrestricted general government aid funding to municipal governments. And the green one is the state revenue, and from twenty fifteen through twenty twenty, they trended quite closely with one another. And then if you notice, beginning in twenty twenty, moving into the coming fiscal year, that stopped, that is no longer the case. And we're now looking at a nearly thirty percent divide. So at a time in fiscal twenty one through twenty three, when state revenue has grown by thirty percent. Unrestricted aid to municipal governments has grown by only six. So unless the legislature amends the budget to revise it. What Eastern's looking at in this other critical revenue category is an increase of sixty five thousand. Rather than what would be five hundred and forty three thousand were they to actually do a revenue share model. This would cost Eastern roughly a half million dollars in opportunity next year, but because of the baseline effect every year forever. As the board is well aware, we have worked incredibly hard to cut our use of reserves and one time money in the operating budget down from over two million. Six years ago to about one million per year. And so it's quite hard to understate the significance that a half million of new recurring funding could pose to the community. So this is something that the Massachusetts Municipal Association is very on top of, they're making a lot of. Overtures and efforts to raise this issue, lobby this issue. And this is an area of critical importance for the Select Board, myself, and the stakeholders of Eastern to stay engaged on as we move through. Budget cycle. The net and long term impact of these funding choices is. Really reflected in this graph, and if you have to drag the Brady Bunch frames around you, I recommend you do. But what this shows is the net state revenue Eastern has received over time, going back to the. Right before the last financial crisis. Where in two thousand and eight, Houston received eleven and a quarter or eleven, yeah, eleven and a quarter million in net state revenue. And next year, my current proposal, that's going to be twelve million, one hundred thousand. So without even adjusting for inflation, what that shows is that net state revenue to Eastern has grown by less than one million dollars in fifteen years. So it's grown seven and a half percent in fifteen years. When you adjust that for inflation, it's significantly more stress inducing. The proposed level of funding for Eastern in fiscal twenty three is three million dollars below. What just level funding in two thousand and eight would have looked like. So I know I spend a lot of time on this every year and I'm spending more time on this than I typically do. But as we try to build out of COVID, and when we're in an environment talking about six, seven percent GDP growth. Federal aid, it's really important for us to remember the broader context of those federal dollars at one time and non-recurring. That there's no GDP growth factor or inflation factor on Prop two and a half. And as it currently stands, the historic increase in state tax revenue collection is not trickling down in a way that benefits this community. Moving into more typical revenue categories for Eastern, the third largest revenue category for us is local receipts. That's composed of things like excise tax, permits, building permits, ambulance fees, meals tax. Local receipts are an important source of revenue, they've been growing quite healthily, they were impacted by COVID. But now that we've closed some of those fiscal years, our actuals of fiscal twenty one significantly exceeded our budget expectations. And were contributed to our large free cash generation. But again, it's important for us to take stock of the reality that while we dramatically exceeded our budgeted expectations. The actuals for twenty one are still slightly below where we were two and three years ago. Fiscal twenty three is projecting a healthy increase of nearly five percent for a total of seven, just shy of seven point two million in this area. Heading into the smallest revenue category for the town, thankfully, is the use of other financing sources, including reserves. The board is aware back in twenty sixteen, in recognition of the longstanding structural revenue deficit borne out of revenue trends we just touched on. The town adopted a suite of financial management policies regarding fund balance goals and the use of one time money. And since then, we've cut the use of one time money in our budget in half, and we've tripled our stabilization fund. So that has not been done without significant challenge. I don't think there's been a budget year since I've done this, this is my sixth one that we went to town meeting and everyone said, awesome, we have everything we need, and this is great, A plus work. So that's been a lot of discipline by elected officials, voters in Eastern, and of course, the department heads of management budgets. So thank you to all of you and them. Fiscal twenty three for now is programming a level fund use of free cash, which is one million from last year. As the board knows, under our own financial management guidelines, we could use more. However. We need to be judicious about not creating artificial financial cliffs that we would need to pay the following year when those one time dollars. Expire after having been spent, and consideration of additional reserve spending will only be considered after further refinement. On the revenue and expense side of the ledger. Just touching a little bit on those reserve balances. They are healthy right now, and they've been trending. They are are healthy right now, and they've been trending positively. And this is the first and only year ever where the town has hit its goal. Maintaining a reserve balance. So that's your stabilization and your free cash equal to ten percent of your uh general fund operating cost. So basically what it means is our rainy day funds are roughly equivalent to ten percent of what it costs us to run the government for a year. Uh when we adopted these policies, that number was five percent. So again, we have made significant progress. Some of that is attributable to one-time things that. Hopefully, there's never cause for creation again like cares and ARPA. Um but it 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 is an important thing to take note of. It's also important not to do a uh preemptive mission accomplished declaration. Because prevailing revenue trends that I just noted, coupled with significant inflation. Uh and drivers on fixed and labor costs are gonna make it more likely that we're going to need to lean on these reserves in the coming years. Just to uh keep uh operations where they are. Just a quick note about ARPA. Uh it's an important source of federal funding uh to Easton and cities and towns around the United States. Uh however, it's accounted separately as a grant. At this time, there's no uh ARPA funds explicitly contemplated uh for use in the operating. Proposal for fiscal twenty-three. Uh that's not to say that there will not be programming in Easton potentially or or certainly supported uh in fiscal twenty-three. That programming is laid out in our ARPA plan, which is available on our ARPA website listed below. Uh just for the the public's benefit, ARPA funds have to be used for specifically outlined purposes as directed by the United States Treasury. Uh there has been uh thankfully, a lot of flexibility granted to cities and towns uh compared to cares. However, because we live in Massachusetts with a kind of funky municipal and county relationship, uh the, there are uh. Intergovernmental dynamics that uh make it so that two-thirds of our federal dollars are not actually uh directly uh in Easton's. Uh deposit, we have to work with the county to apply for and receive those. So that's going to be uh an ongoing project for management and finance for years to come. Uh and same note of caution that uh it's tempting when you have good reserve balances to say, well, just you have a million dollar hole. You have four million in stabilization. I solved the problem, but uh we need to be careful to not create financial cliffs. So here's a revenue summary. Uh again, you're looking at uh ninety-six point four million. It's an increase of four point four percent. Uh much shorter part of presentation budgets, very preliminary at the stage as always. Town department budgets. So this is all of our operating departments, public works, police, fire, town hall, health and community services. Uh projected to increase at uh three point eight one percent with very limited exceptions that we will uh get into more detail on during the budget hearing process. These are level service and staff, and it includes budgeting for a two percent cost of living. Uh the Easton school budget is a placeholder of four percent uh and will be refined uh through the school's concurrent uh. Uh budget process. As is typical, uh all departmental budgets will be presented in detail by those department heads. To join a hearing of finance committee of the select board in the spring as they become refined. Right now, uh we're looking at a preliminary expense forecast of ninety-seven and a half million, which is an increase of five million or five point six percent over the prior year. As is typical at this early stage of a budget process, many of our fixed cost drivers are estimated. And we're awaiting final figures from various state and uh intergovernmental uh and private sector authorities to uh finalize that budget. Some that are looming that will have an impact that could be positive or negative. Uh include the snow and ice deficit. As you know, from my update to you, we have six thousand dollars left in that account. So uh pray that there's no snow of hopefully ever again. Um the outcome of collective bargaining, uh there are somewhere, I think fourteen or fifteen unions uh worth of contracts expiring in June. On the town and school side, we're working with our labor partners on that. Obviously, the outcome of those will have a meaningful and material impact on operating costs. The uh insurance premium costs for uh active and retiree uh uh employees. From the GIC is a placeholder at this time. When the commission sets its rates, uh that will have a impact on our budget. Similarly, our workers' comp property and uh casualty liability rates are still unknown. Finally, uh education assessments from regional schools have been increasing uh quite significantly. We put fifteen percent placeholders in there for now. Uh we are, we await uh information from Southeastern Regional and Bristol Aggie, and we will update budget when we get those. Uh there's some notable increases in fixed costs, obviously, uh particularly at this early stage. One of them that will stick out to you on the next slide is debt service. That's attributable to the excluded debt authorized by Eastern voters, and that's offset by a corresponding matching increase in the exempt levy. Uh so what you have is a projected expense forecast of ninety-seven and a half million or roughly five point six percent. So next steps from here, uh we're at about a one point one million dollar deficit, which is not atypical for this point of a process. Accepting fiscal twenty-one with COVID, uh this is pretty, pretty standard. Uh we've seen much larger than this even before COVID. Uh so we'll work together with all of our partners to get it to balance uh by May as we must and always do. Uh the next steps here uh for us will be monitoring the state budget process and um lobbying for and speaking with our uh elected leadership. Uh for equitable increases to local uh aid and education funding. That's really uh going to be a difference maker. Uh for us and for municipalities around Massachusetts. Uh we will continue to review and refine our local uh receipt projections. Based on actual quarterly collections as we move through the spring. And then finally, we're going to plug in those updated fixed cost figures when we get them. And if need be, after those other steps have been accomplished, uh reduce and refine departmental budget requests. Uh to get us into balance. So happy to take any questions from anyone on the board.
Craig, comments, questions?
Just once again, very impressed with the work that you and Wendy do, um along with your department heads to present, to produce this document. Connor, thank you very much.
Mark?
I don't have any questions at this point. There's a lot to think about. Um you know, we've been through this. We go through this every year. Uh. I feel like uh I I repeat the same thing every year, but the state age chapter seventy is absolutely maddening. I can't be more frustrated every time I see uh those figures in this presentation. And how it's just getting smaller and smaller. And um I cannot say enough how frustrated I am every time I see that. Uh but you know, we have a lot of work ahead of us. We still have a job to do, and uh we will get it done.
Thanks, Mark. Jamie?
The only question I had, and I think it's an easy one to uh explain, but when, you know, given that we are. A uh I forget the terminology, if we're a town that minimum, minimum aid, right? Does it hurt us at all, all the work that we do to improve our credit rating, to in improve our. Um free cash to, does that, is that part of the criteria that we're graded on ultimately as a minimum aid community?
Uh that's a great question. I'm not positive if those specific metrics are in there. Um what I can tell you i- is that some of them are things such as what they call the wage adjustment factor, where they they plug Easton into various labor markets. To try to come up with what would we need to pay to get competitive personnel. Uh Eastern has for years felt that we are mismatched. We're placed in a, I think a more south coast rather than metro uh wage uh factor area. That significantly hampers our calculation. And um Senator Timolty actually got us an audience with various budget makers years ago. Before COVID with school leaders to have conversations about that. But that, that hasn't, we have not, uh and I believe the center actually filed amendments to move Easton. Um into a new wage area, but that has not gained traction. So. There are various economic factors that contribute to it, uh including some that we we don't necessarily agree with, but other ones that you would look at would be, you know, the the. Value of property, the the per capita income. It it's, and I'm sure there's a a state budget official screaming into a pillow as I see this. But uh to simplify something like this, but really, I mean, you can, for our purposes on this level, look at the chapter seventy funding formula for a minimum aid community. And it's effectively shorthand for, we think you could fund it with over rights.
Is there anything else we can be doing as individual members or collectively to help in the lobbying effort to. In improve, you know, or to change, to make more equitable. The state aid.
Uh I don't know. Uh obviously, we, we have uh good relationships with our delegation and and all of them uh have always been open to this conversation. And sympathetic to this cause. I think prior to the past couple of years, it's been. Um a challenging, but somewhat understanding dynamic. The Commonwealth has its own fixed costs that it's it's grappling with and 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 its own. Uh you know, uh guarantees they need to meet. Um this is unique because their revenue has grown thirty percent. Um in in a few years. So I I I just think engagement uh is important. Uh we, we will be, uh we've been asked by Senator Timolty, Senator Brady and and Rep Doherty uh to provide. Uh as this time of year is typical, um you know, letters requesting with any kind of particular areas of focus in our budget needs. That we would uh like focus uh from our state partners on. Uh traditionally, folks usually bring up kind of one-time. Uh items in in that. That's how you see things like uh really critical earmarks like for Blackbrook Road come through. But this year, uh in talking about this dynamic with Dottie, with Rep Doherty and and soon Senator Timolty, we're going to basically put all of our. Weight behind highlighting and reiterating this particular structural problem because. You know, state level support for projects is is great. It helps us get a lot of a good capital work that we do get done. It's part of how I think Easton punches well above its weight and its capital investments. Um but losing a half million in the coming year. And every year forever is uh so much more significant than one project. So we will be focusing our efforts there. Uh and I'll be working with. Uh our staff and administration to draft, to consolidate what's like a fourteen-page memo into something that is a little uh. More succinct on this topic for our state leaders and then we'll share it with the board.
Great. Thank you very much for your work and Wendy's work and the teams. Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. Jim?
Yeah, just again, thank you for the incredible amount of work that goes into this to you, Wendy, and all the department heads. And everyone else um who contributes to this. It's as, as always, it's very thorough and um articulate. Um and it's really encouraging to see the free cash. We're in a good spot there, and I hope we are able to maintain that looking ahead. Because I know it was a lot of work and a lot of um doubling down and really being um very mindful that got us there. Um the question I have is, you know, you're talking about the state increase and the their revenue um from taxation and and. You know, from spending and um and whatnot, is, what is the state spending this money on? Like, what is their kind of? How are they handling this windfall essentially right now, which may be temporary, maybe not, or? What are some of the big things that, you know, are we not seeing any of it as a community?
Uh no, I don't think it would be fair to the state to say that we in other cities and towns don't see benefits from from those increases. I mean, you could make a a very kind of systemic argument that um there's some rationale to state budget makers. Making decisions about which schools and then communities are more in need of funding. Um right, in an ideal world, state funding formulas like this are ostensibly equalizers. So that people have access to the same, a similar level of resources, no matter what the demographics of the zip code they're born into, right? Um so I I feel that it's important. That's my professional opinion um to acknowledge that. I I but as far as a fiscal twenty-three budget proposal, uh I kind of skipped directly to the municipal uh piece. Because that has the hugest impact, but I I haven't uh read through uh significant adjustments uh in other programming. Um I will uh after this question, but I do know that there are some proposals on the table for tax cuts uh and um refunds. And uh you know, that's uh always an area worth considering uh in an environment of uh revenue surplus. They're also uh doing a a responsible thing uh with uh rebuilding. The state tapped its own stabilization fund, not unlike us during the crisis. So I mean, there there's certainly areas to invest in. Um. But I will, I I will certainly uh see if I can get a more comprehensive understanding of that and and share with the board.
Thank you.
So I think it's also important to note that the Mass Municipal Association also stands uh for, you know, increases. Um that are a little bit higher than this, uh mirror the way the states increases have happened. And so there is advocacy on that level as well. In addition to um our requests to our legislators, I think that this board is always operated very fiscally conservative. We try not to use, um you know, funds, i- it's tempting as it can be when you start to see the work that. That we've done to um build that reserve account. But you know, you never know when you're gonna have these years, like we've had the past couple of years. Um they're cyclical and and unexpected. And we worked really hard to put the financial principles in place so that we would be able to um have these policies to to keep us in a good position. So I think we just have to stay the course and um, you know, keep advocating uh for change. And maybe we can get Senator Timolty to try to put that amendment for the wage scale movement um back in this year. You know, see if he's has uh an interest in doing that. The worst they can say is no. But I really appreciate all the work and uh the thoughtfulness that you put into the budget, Connor. This is just the first of uh the budget discussions. And we'll whittle, whittle that um difference away as we move forward.
Thank you.
All right. With that, um would somebody like to make a motion to accept the minutes of February seventh, twenty twenty-two?
So moved, Barger.
Lamb.
Barger and Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And Fulltonetti, yes. Town administrator notes, Connor?
Uh yes, I I have a a few things I want to note uh quickly. Um first is uh that we received notice. From treasurer collector Linda Hawks uh about a week ago uh that uh we had a advantageous uh real estate auction conducted. By Linda uh last summer. Uh this was for town-owned parcels, mostly acquired over the years of tax title. Uh a few of them did not close, but seven did. It is going to generate roughly four hundred fifty thousand in revenue, which will contribute to free cash. For fiscal twenty-three. Uh that's a really uh substantial amount that'll bolster our reserve and capital capacities. And there are downstream benefits of this as well of uh getting these properties off of our uh real estate ledger. Uh and and back on uh into private ownership where they are paying taxes once again, because obviously we don't pay taxes on our own property. Um it's important financial housekeeping and it's it's a good part of our real estate management. Linda's been really great at staying on top of these uh since she's been. Uh the treasurer collector, and I appreciate it. Uh another item I'd like to just give an update on, as the board knows, I'm I'm the Massachusetts Municipal Managers. Uh or sorry, Massachusetts Municipal Association representative on the uh interagency PFOs task force established by state legislation. Uh that committee is concluding its work. It was intended to file its report by end of calendar year. That was extended slightly. Uh and a uh in internal draft of the findings and report and recommendations for the legislature uh was reviewed by the task force. Uh and that uh the the synthesis of those individual member comments uh will be produced and released publicly into a a final report. Uh I believe in the coming weeks. Um and uh obviously, we'll share that with the board. And if if Dottie or the board would like, happy to give a a more thorough presentation on what those recommendations are and and what the task forces uh findings were. Um but we are nearing conclusion of that uh after almost um nine months of of hearings. So it's been great. And uh really an honor to be able to represent municipal government on that and Easton. And then finally, and I'm gonna turn this over to Mike, uh we have uh for some time now through my own goal setting with the board and uh my Excel updates. Uh highlighted that we, this is gonna be the year that despite budget challenges and all the other normal things we need to work on. Uh pandemics and vaccine clinics, we're gonna get a citizens academy uh off the ground, and we have done that. And uh I really should say, Mike has done that. He's done uh the uh most of the work. Uh he started advertising it uh tonight. I'm super excited about it. I think it's great. Uh and uh Mike, could you just give a a brief overview of the information that's out there and how people apply?
Absolutely. So as the board will call, we talked about this and presented an overview of the academy to you in January. And as Connor said, we're excited to announce that registration is now live as of today. Um for, as a reminder, for the benefit of everybody watching the citizens academy, we'll allow residents to learn, learn more about town government. Through a variety of classes and interactive activities. It's gonna be a nine-week program um and give participants a close view of local government. Um and develop informed and civically minded future community leaders. Um we believe this is the academy will be an excellent way to educate residents, build positive relationships and group uh increase communication between. Um our local government and citizens as well, and hopefully inspire future municipal involvement and leadership on our boards and committees. Um weekly sessions, we help Monday evenings in various locations in Easton and in the region from six to eight P M. And um applicants must be eastern residents, eighteen years of age or older. We will give preference to those who are registered voters. We're gonna limit the uh size of the class to about twenty participants. Um if residents are interested and want to be considered for the spring twenty twenty-two. Um if residents are interested and want to be considered for the spring twenty twenty-two session, uh they can visit easton.me.us slash citizens academy. We have links on our homepage, social media, and applications are due by five P M on Monday, March twenty-first. So we're really excited to officially roll that out.
Awesome work, Mike. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's great. I'm excited about that, too. I'm sorry, did you have another one?
I said that's, that's more than enough for me. Thank you.
Craig?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Mark?
I have nothing tonight.
Jamie?
My mind is mush.
Same boat.
So I just have one thing. It's um not really directly related to the things that we're doing right now. But I just want to say, um you know, with the, the unrest that's happening right now over in the Ukraine and Russia. Um my I T department sent us out an email that was saying to be particularly cautious of cyber attacks right now on your, on your email. And I would just let everybody think about um when you receive email from people. I got an email today from somebody in town who I'm friends with that asked me, do I have an Amazon account and can I help them? You should click on the person's name and see what the actual email address is. And it's usually not the person that usually ends in an extension that's not dot com. That is um something that you delete right away. And if you ever get an email that looks like it's coming from your bank and it's asking you to click on something to check your password, never do that. Always call your bank. If anybody's asking you for any kind of information like that through email, always call your bank or your credit card company or your mortgage company or whoever. Um and particularly share this with the older people in your life because a lot of these crimes are targeted towards older people. And um it's, it's really, it's, it's frightening. You know, my mother, she gets these emails and it's very upsetting to her. Um so just really, really pay careful attention to that. And if you have a lot of um important information and photos on your computer, consider getting an external backup and moving your stuff over to the air or putting it in the cloud just as, as a safety precaution. So um that's, that's my helpful tip for the day. And uh with that, if somebody would like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Barger.
Second lamb.
Barger, Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
Stacy, yes.
Full genetti, yes. And thank you, everyone. Have a good night, and we will see you in two weeks.
Stay safe, everybody. Good night.
Bye. Thank you.